Welcome to the Bossier City Regular Council Meeting. Today is Tuesday, October 17th, 2023. It is 3:03. We're going to have our call to order. Invitation by Councilmember Jeff Darby and our pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Don Williams.
Let us pray. Holy Father, thank you for this time that you allowed us to live and to see. Thank you for this day. Thank you for those who are in our midst. We thank you for family. We thank you for friends. We thank you, Lord God, for your goodness and your kindness this day. We pray for those who are hurting. We pray for those who are suffering due to war. And we ask you, Lord God, to set a hedge around your elect, Israel. Lord, we pray for every person who provide protection. We thank you for those who are here that serve others. We ask you to give us direction to do those things to bring glory to your name. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
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 Please face the flag, repeat the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call.
Mr. Montgomery?
Here.
Mr. Hammond's absent. Mr. Darby?
Here.
Mr. Free?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Maggio?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Counsel, in accordance with Louisiana Open Meetings laws and the adopted Bossier City Council Meeting Rules Resolution, the City Council asks for order and decorum at our meetings. Please silence your cell phones. Anyone wishing to address the council on any agenda items may approach and state their names and address for the record and shall be permitted three minutes to make their comments on the particular item that's up for discussion with up to four speakers per side. Any person making personal impertinent or slanderous remarks or who shall become boisterous while addressing the council shall be forthwith by the president pro tem, barred from further audience before the council unless permission to continue be granted by a majority vote of the council. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body and not to any member thereof. No questions shall be asked at councilperson or the mayor except through the meeting chair. All other audience members are asked to please observe the meeting quietly. City Council has appointed the city marshals as the sergeant-at-arms and they have been instructed to maintain decorum and ask anyone in violation to step out of the meeting.
All right, entertain a motion to approve the agenda as written.
I make a motion to approve today's agenda. Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Smith. Questions from the audience? And please cast your vote.
One moment, counsel. It's logged me out. Get back in. Do you know that we have an internet issue?
My internet's gone down on my computer as well.
Or is it backup now, counsel? For yours?
Yes.
So I had a motion by Mr. Williams and a second by Mr. Smith?
Correct.
Come up, counsel.
Not yet.
Motion carries.
All right, ceremonial matters or recognition of guests?
Kayla Kayer, Northwest Louisiana Reentry Community Coordinator with Goodwill Industries of North Louisiana.
Good afternoon. My name is Kayla Kayer and I'm the reentry community coordinator for Bossier and Caddo parishes. On behalf of Goodwill Industries of North Louisiana and the Department of Public Safety and Corrections, I'm here today to invite you to our first reentry simulation. So as of October 4th, which is the most recent numbers I could get, there were 1,065 people in Bossier Parish under felony supervision at the probation and parole office. This number doesn't include your constituents who finished their supervision and were discharged or the people who were released from jail and didn't have to go through supervision at all. Excuse me. So the purpose of our simulation is to help you gain understanding what these people have to go through when they leave prison. So according to Louisiana Department of Public Safety and Corrections website, within five years of being released, nearly 43% of people will return back to prison. So this recidivism rate is very high and significantly contributes to the crime in our community. In this simulation, you'll receive a new identity where you may or may not have money, you may or may not have a job, you may or may not have a place to live, a driver's license, a birth certificate, and you have to go through four 15-minute weeks with this new identity trying to navigate the system, going under supervision, basically living as these people live when they get released from prison. Our ultimate goal is for everyone to become more knowledgeable of this situation and to spark new ideas how we can lower crime in our community. So the simulation will be... Sorry.
It's okay.
The simulation will be on Friday, December 8th, from 9:00 to 11:00 at First Methodist Church in Shreveport. I meant to bring you all flyers, but I had printer issues, so I'll make sure you get those in your email boxes. Shreveport City Council, Bossier Police Jury, and the Caddo Commissioners are all also invited, so I'd love to see Bossier City Council represented there as well. So thank you for your time. I hope to see you there and look out for that flyer and your email.
Thank you. All right, counsel, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of October 3rd, 2023 Regular Council Meeting and dispense with the reading.
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Smith, I mean Williams, second by Councilman Smith. Questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
All right, unfinished business?
Adopting ordinance authorizing a variance to ordinance number 79 of 2008. Final reading.
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Smith, second by Councilman Williams. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance to approve report of change order number one for the Walter O'Bigby Carriageway beautification efforts within Phase 1 of the Walter O'Bigby Carriageway with an increase in project cost of $17,663.03 and adding an additional 143 days. Final reading.
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Williams. Questions from the audience?
Is that Williams or Mr. Maggio?
Vote.
Second vote is Maggio.
David Crockett, 653 Domain Drive, Bossier City, Louisiana. I think some of the comments that were made last week were very appropriate, but I think one thing that the public needs to understand is that the monument includes the names. I mean, I just... So many questions from this. Names of past councilmembers, names of engineers. These are plaques that are put around the monument that the city is paying extra money for and having this change order. The issue of change orders for these things was brought up, and that's a very appropriate comment, and those things need to be answered for the public. You know, if the city had a city engineer... It's amazing to me that the surface structure, the ground structure for anything in Bossier City is ever questioned. Any design estimate should include some sort of a survey of the ground structure, especially for a tall, heavy structure. So those were appropriate comments. But then the other thing is this was explained as the cost of this was associated with that. It was also associated with changes to the plaques of about 20 people, which are current city councilmen, but not all of the current city councilmen. That ought to be questioned. But, you know, people like former city councilmen, former city attorneys, the owner of Walker Advanced Consulting LLC, employer of Best Yet Builders. I mean, were these people that paid for their plaques? Or is the city paying to recognize people? Current councilmen, listed engineers, former mayor of Bossier City. But I don't think I see our current mayor, Keith Tindall, engineer, names of other people, Jordan Pearson, engineer, David North, L.A. DOTD District Administrator. Of course, some of our, you know, current councilmen, Mark Hudson, Hayden Bigby, grandson of Walter O'Bigby, Walter O'Bigby Jr. It makes no sense. It really makes no sense. The people in Bossier City who live in adjacent neighborhoods... I just drove through that neighborhood yesterday to talk to somebody else who's working on Bossier City term limits. The roads are falling apart. Dilapidated houses with trees growing inside buildings. The neighborhoods need attention, and I'll talk about that later as we go through the budget issues. But I think the city can do better. I think the public is very, very frustrated. It is a tower of tax dollars. You know, you have a lot of really good public citizens. Sobo Live doing a great job covering these issues. Bossier Watch covering these issues. Jeff Sadow, people who've been commenting forever. We don't really get much out of our Bossier Press Tribune. So the city council gets very little coverage. But finally, I think people are waking up. Thank you.
All right, comments from the council? Any additional comments from the public?
Mr. President.
Good afternoon, counsel. Just, I don't think I did a good job past couple meetings in describing kind of some of the circumstances surrounding this particular issue. So just wanted to communicate a few things to y'all. My role as city engineer is to execute the various infrastructure initiatives commissioned by the council and the administration. In 2019, the city council approved funding to beautify the Carriageway corridor. The city administration formalized a contract with McSwain to perform that work. This effort progressed in the manner not unlike other city infrastructure projects. There was collaborative effort between McSwain and the city leaning on McSwain's talented team to create a landmark feature beautifying the Carriageway. The intent behind this effort was similar to a number of projects the city has partnered with McSwain on. The East Bank District, for example, that's given the city a unique ambiance. Cyber Innovation Center, which includes the LTRI building that was recently completed, is another example. And I think it's important to mention that currently the CIC has an annual economic impact approaching 150 million in salaries alone. This project was advertised for bids in the city's official paper of record. The bids were opened publicly in these council chambers in January and approved unanimously by the council. The city administration formalized contracts for construction. The project has proceeded since in the same fashion as all city projects. We encountered a few challenges during construction, not unlike any infrastructure project that require careful consideration and additional resources to overcome. These challenges are clearly identified and before you in the form of the change order. Now, I could have done a better job of explaining the specifics of the change order during the last council meeting, but please allow me to provide some additional background information related to the foundation changes that were discussed. I'd also like to reiterate that there's $75 million left in this budget to do this work. Okay, the project is not over budget. There's $75 million left in that project. Additionally, the project does include nice landscaping. There's a landscape package as part of the project. I think it's important that you guys are aware of that. There was a foundation plan included as part of the design. The design was prepared by Finner Jolly McClellan. Many of y'all probably know that company. They have very talented structural engineers. Soil boring data was used to design a helical pile foundation. This was all part of the plans, okay? The contractor, Darren Bailey, subcontracted with PPT. PPT is a local foundation company. If you do any foundation work in this region of the state, you're familiar with who they are. The structural design in the plans required PPT to submit their helical pile design for review and approval. This is not unlike any project, engineer designs something, contractor has to provide submittals on that. Through this process, there was a disagreement regarding the helical pile approach, and a concrete shaft approach was recommended, okay? Based on careful review of the information, it was determined that the concrete shaft approach provided the best value for the city. And that's what's before you in the change order, and I'm requesting your concurrence on that. I'd also like to say, because I don't get, you know, a chance to do so often, I am honored to serve in the role of city engineer. And may I remind you, I'm a graduate of Bossier High School. I do not take my role or this responsibility for granted and truly understand that the buck stops with me. I understand there's an expectation of excellence and work diligently daily to manage, produce, and construct a capital improvement program that approaches $100 million. There has always been an understanding that even under the best circumstances, there will be a mistake, an oversight, an unforeseen challenge, or unknown subsurface condition. As any good project manager would do, budgets for projects are developed to include contingencies. Embedded into this program are literally millions of decisions. Millions, probably hundreds of millions of decisions. To provide some perspective, this is roughly the equivalent of managing the construction of about 330 homes simultaneously with at most four people. And there would still be issues if there were 40 or 400 people. The engineering department has partnered with numerous design and construction professionals that have dedicated their talent and resources to carefully produce complex and challenging projects. I'm very proud of the work the team we have assembled does, including both public and private resources. We produce daily for the city and consider the portfolio of this work to be at a level of excellence by comparison to exceed those of other communities. We have a strong reputation in our field for delivering quality work.
Are there any other questions related to the change order? Thank you.
Thank you, man.
All right, ready to cast your vote?
I'm going to make a statement. Mr. President, I think we've had some miscommunication and misinformation by design regarding the council, and I would like to enter into the record regarding what we've done proactively on this council. We have an active committee that I chair along with Mr. Williams and Mr. Maggio. At the top of our list is police and fire retention and new hire incentives. Our committee has addressed the critical subject of police retention and hiring. Out of that committee, we recommended that we reinstate educational incentive, and we've done that. We addressed that through the budget process, and we would like to look at the increase of salaries for both police and fire and look at ways that we can put boots on the ground in the police department. That's what we've done already. I've also initiated a citywide salary study, which is budgeted in 2024. This again is to address the cross-board salary of city employees. We are going to be comparing their starting pay, mid-level pay, to other municipalities, because we do care about city employees and keeping good people in the city of Bossier. In regards to the monument or the statue, I take full responsibility that, yes, I voted to accept the landscape beautification bid on the 24th of January of 2023. I failed to give my full attention to the landscape bid, which included the monument. So I take responsibility for that. I think everybody who breathe and perhaps wears shoes have overlooked things in their lives. So I'm guilty of that. Had I known that this monument was really in those proposals that we read, I think I would not have supported it. I can say that with less... No reservations, because I don't know if people understand that we try to do the best we can, but sometimes we mess up. And when you mess up, you fess up. And I think that was a mistake on my part, voting to not paying attention to that full package of the bid. And that's what I wanted to say today.
Thank you. Any additional comments from counsel? All right, cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance authorizing the reclassification of a vacant engineering aid four position to an engineering aid one position with a salary reduction and hiring the position creation and hiring of a part-time engineering aid one position and increasing the salaries for the floodplain analyst, office manager three, and engineering aid two positions, all within the engineering department, resulting in a net neutral change to the operating budget. Final reading.
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Maggio. Comments from the audience?
David Crockett, 653 Domain Drive, Bossier City, Louisiana. I forgot to mention Mr. Settle. I appreciate all the work he does too. But I wanted to comment on this. I see what you're doing, but I haven't heard anything from the council. It seems like that this may be the cart before the horse, making changes in the engineering department for this and the item number five. I think your idea of a salary study is absolutely appropriate. I think it would be nice to hear from the engineer department and from the city council. Has guidance been given to all departments in the city that if you get rid of people and get rid of some services, that you can spread the salary around within that division and it doesn't apply to other divisions or the city staff? I think those are questions that need to be addressed to the public. How is the city going to maintain the same level of service? Those are questions that the mayor needs to ask or answer. But I think that this would be more appropriate maybe after a salary study and maybe some sort of a manpower study on the work issues that would be related to this. But we haven't heard anything from the public, and I think this applies to item number five also. But I do have another comment. And my comments are not directed towards the city engineer personally, but I do think that this is ultimately the city's responsibility for hiring a city engineer as it is stated in the city charter. I know everybody works as hard as they can, but is this the best model to get the best dollar or best work per dollar through a contractor rather than an engineer? I personally believe that the city engineer ought to be the highest paid position in the city staff. I think that trying to hire an engineer for $80,000 or $90,000 to do this job is not serving Bossier City. The city needs very powerful metrics for the number of change orders and the dollar value of change orders per year. These are huge issues for the city. You could pay for a high-quality engineer staff just with change orders alone. Not directed to you, Mr. Rouschenbach, and you're a great member of this community. I'm not questioning that at all. But I think that we do need to ask those questions and we need to hear from the city staff. Why make changes like this before you've completed your personnel study? Those are the kinds of questions you should be asking. So why do it? I don't know.
Mr. Crockett, I got several things to say on that. You know, we've been moving people around, just like what Mr. Rouschenbach just did. Eliminate one or not hire one, move money around. And Transportation Department did it. I mean, all departments do it, you know? And I've always asked, if you got one person and you're not going to hire him, delete it from a roster so we won't hire him again in the future. So what they're doing is it's a net neutral, you know? As far as Mr. Rouschenbach's qualifications, I know I've said this before. I've known him since he was a kid playing football at Bossier High School, and he's one of the smartest guys, probably the best engineer we've ever had. You couldn't get another one better than that. And that's my opinion.
Mr. President, I will comment as well. What the city pays a city engineer versus what the charter qualifies, you couldn't afford what we pay a city engineer. And so while I've had my issues with the contract itself, my issues have never been with Mr. Rouschenbach personally. He's actually probably the most helpful city employee that I work with on a daily basis. And this is what we're voting on here is been commonplace for this council and the city for many years. And so it's a position they don't think they need, and so I see no reason to question it.
Not eliminating a position in the engineering department, just to be clear. We had an engineered aide that retired, and that salary was pretty high. And so we brought that down to an engineering aide one. That position still exists, and we've used that additional salary to provide an increased financial incentive to some of the other employees there. I didn't believe it was appropriate. I wouldn't have sponsored the ordinance and brought it before this council. Thank you.
Any additional comments from counsel? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance, amending ordinance number 179 of 2022 for repairs and upgrades to the North Side Pump Station, adding additional $40,000 to the project to come from sewer capital and contingency funds. Final reading.
Second.
I make a motion.
Second.
Thank you.
Who made the motion?
Motion made by Councilman Maggio, second by Councilman Williams. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance authorizing the elimination of one vacant utility worker one position and allocation of the salary surplus equally among the 12 current water treatment division employees within the public utilities department, resulting in a net neutral change to the operating budget. Final reading.
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Darby. Comments from the audience?
David Crockett, 653 Domain Drive, Bossier... Do I need to say that each time?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I just... I want to address this. I'm not throwing stones at you, but I do think the city needs to be metrics-driven. Engineering needs to be a metrics-driven process. Whether you don't get rid of the position or not, but you increase your salary based on that, I think it's a policy issue. I think the city council needs to address that. Do other departments look at other vacant positions so they can work their pay raises that way? I mean, is that the way the city's going to do this? Or are you going to wait for the city's study? I think that's the appropriate way to do this. But I think that there are other issues in dealing with this one issue. And I'm just going to throw out something that has bothered me since I did the first petition. I ran into one of the city water employees, and he's wearing a Manchak patch on his shirt. And I asked him, I said, "Are you a Manchak employee?" Because I only thought that there were a couple in the city. But he was a city employee, and I asked him, I said, "Why are you wearing a Manchak patch? Does he work for the city or does he work for Manchak?" The city employee didn't really appreciate that he had to wear a Manchak patch. I don't know if the shirts are bought by Manchak. I don't know why that's the case. Are we advertising for a contractor? I personally believe that you get the best...
Mr. President, excuse me, Mr. Crockett. If we could caution the audience from speaking...
Can you please pause my tone?
Sir?
Please pause my time.
You're going to give your time, but we're pausing for a minute because we have those in the audience that are speaking to the council members right now. So I would ask that you request from the audience that they not speak to council members unless they would like to come up after you're through, Mr. Crockett.
No, no, I appreciate it.
Yes, or take your conversations out to the lobby and have them. That'd be great.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. So I think this is just a part of a bigger debate. I raised this whole issue when we had the Port Authority discussion. I think the city needs a city engineer. I think the city engineer needs to be very highly paid, whether it be Mr. Rouschenbach or whoever it needs to be. There are big perception issues in the city for a long time about how much we pay for overtime and the fact that this comes with extra charges. I think the city needs to follow the charter. Whether you want to change the charter for that or not is another thing. I worked as a contractor. I can tell you that as a contractor at the base, my fiduciary responsibility was first to my company, second to the person that I'm working for. I think the city needs to grapple with that. So thank you for the time. And Mr. Rouschenbach, I know you're a very professional engineer, and I'm not saying that that's the problem.
Additional comments from the public? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance amending the 2023 general fund engineering budget by forty-two thousand dollars, increasing expenditures for contract mowing charges in the property standards division. Final reading.
So move.
Second.
First by Councilman Smith, second by Councilman Williams. Questions from the audience, comments? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance authorizing the reclassification of a vacant electrician three position to a utility worker two position with a salary reduction and hiring of the position, reduction of salary for vacant foreman one position, and increasing the salaries for two utility worker one positions, all within the lift stations division of public utilities, resulting in a net neutral change to the operating budget. Final reading.
So move.
Second.
First by Councilman Smith, second by Councilman Williams. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance amending the 2023 general fund engineering budget by twenty thousand dollars, increasing expenditures for advertising and legal notices. Final reading.
So move.
Second.
First by Councilman Smith, second by Councilman Maggio. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to amend the 2023 sewer capital and contingency budget. Final reading.
So move.
Second.
Second. First by Councilman Smith, second by Councilman Maggio and Councilman Williams. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance authorizing Mayor Thomas H. Chandler to execute the attached first amendment to the license and naming rights agreement between the city of Bossier City and Brookshire Grocery Company. Final reading.
So move.
Second.
First by Councilman Smith, second by Councilman Williams. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Public hearing for the city of Bossier City's proposed 2024 operating and capital budgets.
All right, we're going to open up the public hearing. Any comments from the audience?
David Crockett, 653 Domain Drive, Bossier City, Louisiana. And this is really, really a huge item. I think it's not very fair to the public to be able to give somebody three minutes for this. I've got so many issues. I think the first question that I'll have, which I'll let somebody address later on, we don't really get to look at the city's capital outlay budget or the capital projects plan. And I think that's a pretty interesting issue because when you look at the projected spending from the last budget, you know, it doesn't include the council unaging. It does have about a seventy-five million dollars shortfall if you look at some of the projects that are in there, the recreation center, the multi-use recreation center and things like that. So, I mean, I can see why the city's going to need to borrow seventy-five million dollars in the future if they're going to do that. Yet if you do that, you won't be able to give the city police and firemen and the city staff pay raises. So I think those are issues that need to be addressed by Bossier City. Also, in this list of items or some other general questions, I didn't know. I think by the number of dollars that are in the city council's budget, I think you'll have a hundred and six thousand dollars in insurance benefits. I'd like for somebody to answer whether the city gets paid for insurance. I didn't know the city council may get insurance benefits. I'd like to know that. I think some of the other things that are addressed in the capital outlay budget that are appropriate is I think as we see shortfalls going in the future rather than borrowing money, I threw additional money I threw out in the last meeting, that there ought to be consideration to either divesting or selling some of the assets that don't make money for the city, that may be able to make money for a private contractor that may want to come in, or private company that may want to come and buy something like the Brookshire Center that costs the city money every year. Those things need to be considered as we do this. This meeting is probably the most important meeting of the year for the city council and the public to gain an understanding of how the city spends its money. There are a lot of issues here. How could you use the Ripper Boat Gaming Trust Fund? Some of these shortfalls could be addressed with that rather than borrowing money. I think that these issues are the issues that are in the back of the minds of the policemen that walk the streets of Bossier City on a daily basis when they see the city council spending money on projects that don't necessarily impact their daily lives. Because I agree with you that your study is going to be worthwhile, but it doesn't give them confidence today. There are other issues that need to be addressed in Bossier City. I've mentioned it probably five times since I've been coming to the council meetings that Hooters Park does not look good, and it needs to be one of the best city parks in the city. Playground equipment needs to be fixed, insulation's falling off the ceiling, the curbs are crumbling there. You could probably spend one and a half or two million dollars there before you buy a tennis court or anything else that you want to spend extra money throughout the year. We need to take care of the people, not the projects that I'll call pet projects. Thank you.
Any additional comments from the audience? Hearing done, we'll close the public.
Mr. President, are we going over any potential changes or is that when we vote on the budget?
November 7th.
Yeah, this is just an opportunity for the public to comment. All right, hearing, no additional comments, we'll close the public hearing on the operating capitalist budgets. All right.
Public hearing, let me get to that one. Public hearing concerning the city of Bossier City's fiscal year 2024 CDBG action plan for housing and community development programs.
All right, we're going to open the public hearing.
Counselors, mayor. We've kind of been through this several times through the years as far as council members go, but this is for the Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG for short, that's what it's called, and it's a grant that comes through HUD.
Thank you in front of your face.
Excuse me. It's a grant that comes through HUD from Congress. We're an entitlement city, so we don't have to compete for the funds. We'll always get some funds, but it depends on what Congress appropriates. And then there's a formula in the law that divides it up. It's based on statistics, population statistics and stuff. So we get the funding through them. We don't get nearly as much funding as we used to, so we can't do as big a projects as we used to do. We do have some control over the money we get. That's kind of why we have public hearings on it. We can use it for anything that's said it's eligible in the law. There are some things that are not eligible, and there are some other restrictions. In fact, there are a lot of restrictions that go on the money. But we start every year. We don't know how much we're going to get, so we start with the same amount that we got last year. And that's what we apply for, put in our plan anyway. And then we adjust that when we find out how much we're going to get, which will be sometime later on in the year. The annual action plan, which is what we're talking about here, is a plan we have every year to show what we're going to do with the money that we're going to get for the next year. It's just a list of projects that we're going to do. And I gave you all one to take a look at there. There's some limitations on the money that we get. We can't spend more than fifteen percent of the total grant amount on public services. And we can't spend more than twenty percent of the total grant amount on administrative costs. And like I said before, they have to meet certain requirements. And one thing is they have to meet one of these three, fit in one of these three categories. They either have to benefit low to moderate income persons, eliminate slums and blight, or be a serious and immediate threat to health and welfare of the community, which would be a disaster, you know? This year, we have five housing-related projects listed. Lead paint, housing rehabilitation, emergency housing rehab, and ramps and critical repairs, which are similar to the ones we've had for the last few years. There are a lot of applicants for those projects. Then we have nine public service contracts. And this is, we don't pay all the funding for these, just contribute to most of them. We have the VOA lighthouse program, the fire prevention activities that our own fire department teaches. Low-income youth sports program, which are parks and recreation. It takes care of the fees for the children that can't afford them to play in the sports programs. Gift of Dance, it's the same thing. It's kind of a dance program for girls. Community Services Transportation Program. They give people rides for dialysis and other medical reasons mainly. And the MCDC Home Buyer Education and Financial Literacy Program to help people maintain their houses and not lose them during some of the bad economic times. Planet Seed, our youth foundations, another children's program, after-school program. Catholic Charities, they're doing home with this particular project, home counseling. And then we got the Still Big Brothers Program, which is a new activity where they propose to teach young men how to work on cars and stuff, to give them a little background in how automobiles work and everything. And we have the micro-business loan program, which is not funded by block grant funds directly anymore. Originally, it was. It's a revolving loan program now. And that's it. Are there any questions? I have a list you could look at of these if you'd like one later.
Any comments from the audience, questions? Questions from the council? All right, we'll close this public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Wow. Move on to new business.
Adopt an ordinance to declare that an emergency did exist in the city of Bossier City which affected property, public health, and safety due to the requirement to restore a 24-inch sewer main blowout along Airline Drive near Meadow Creek at a cost of eighty-two thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars to come from the sewer capital contingency funds. First and final reading.
So move.
Second. Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Darby. Third by Councilman Maggio. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to amend the 2023 sales tax capital improvement fund for traffic signal communication upgrades. First reading.
So move.
Second.
First by Councilman Smith, second by Councilman Maggio. Questions from the audience?
Mr. President, can I ask of Mr. Rouschenbach, is this have anything, is this tied into the signal improvements we did earlier this year, later last year?
It's all tied together. We've actually entered into a contract with ShreveCom to do a bunch of that work. We've got software and some other components of that system in work. And with traffic engineering, they're seeing a need for an additional supplement to get all of that done. So it's every signal within the city's preview gets upgraded. Many people don't know that we don't know when the power goes out or there's an issue with a signal or can even look at a signal remotely. And so this will modernize that whole system as long as we do. Any other questions?
Somewhat on topic, but given the construction on I-20, is your traffic engineering team managing kind of what's going on on Airline Benton and Bartstel to try to keep traffic moving as best as possible?
They are. Thank you for the question. We expected to see traffic sort of normalize a little bit to that. And truthfully, it seems to be much better, frankly, than what we had anticipated, specifically at the Highway 80 corridor, the Old Mandan corridor. We were expecting those to be, receive a lot more pressure coming from north of town. Maybe a little bit of delay, but you're not seeing a bunch of congestion on I-20 or I-220, excuse me, in the morning. So we've got a bit of an issue. We've got a lane closure on Benton Road right now, south of I-220. And I'm noticing that drivers are being good drivers, and they're all trying to merge into that open left lane. They don't need to do that so early. They can zipper in further down where that lane gets closed, but everybody's trying to get over. So we've looked at that a little bit today to see if there's some improvements. But that's going to continue on probably for the next few weeks. So far, pretty good.
The bad thing is when you're taking kids to school and the trains stop.
Train's not good.
And that's.
And you gotta get on the crazy interstate, so.
That's what I was actually going to bring up. I don't know who can maybe try to communicate, not that it helps anytime we try to communicate with them, but I was coming from Shreveport yesterday, decided to come over Texas Street Bridge and hit Highway 80. And that from Boggs and Poole's office all the way to the roundabout was dead stopped because a train had come and stopped on Highway 80. And I got stuck there for about an hour without.
It's like getting afternoons too, when you pick them up from practice.
Yeah, but with the interstate being closed and we're all taking alternate routes, I think it's really exacerbating the issue, especially there, so.
Yeah, hopefully, we can get the Carriageway open and get over that train. That's the one that stops everybody there. They are currently on schedule, a little ahead of schedule to get that done. But so far, pretty pleased with how that's going. And yes, to answer your question, our traffic engineering department's working very closely with the state on those. on those routes and looking at tweaking signals if we need to tweak them to try to improve flow through those corridors. Any other questions? Thank you all.
Any comments from the audience? Additional questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance, amending ordinance 76 of 2023, appropriating an additional $700,000 in funds from the 2018 LCDA bond fund to supplement the 2023 Public Utilities Capital Budget for miscellaneous water loops necessary for improving water flow for fire protection. First reading.
So move.
Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Maggio. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance amending the 2023 Streets and Drainage Fund budget by $700,000 to increase the Capitol Street Improvements Project. First reading.
So move.
Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Darby. Comments from the audience? Yes, you are.
I know, thank you. I'll take that as a compliment. David Crockett, 653, Domain Drive, Bossier City, Louisiana. This is probably one of the best things on the agenda because I hear this from people over and over, walking through neighborhoods where they talk about, I ask them, what do you want to see more from your council? They want to see better roads. That's what they say over and over again. Now, just for the public's knowledge, I think you have about a half mill that brings in about $3.8 million every year for street improvements. And I think that that's probably not adequate in the long run, but I don't think anybody wants increased taxes. So moving money from other types of funds, I think, would be what the city would like to see. Thank you, Mr. Rouschenbach, for bringing this up. But I think what the city would like to hear is a strategy for what the city's going to do in the long run to fix the older parts of the city's roads and streets. They're not hearing that. I hear it over and over again when I'm talking to people. That's the number-one thing that they say that's missing right now. The older parts of the city that are kind of right here in this area, right here in the council, your people are the people that are complaining about it the most. So I think it would be nice if the city would come up with a briefing of sorts that would show where maybe other money could be used in the future. We're going to talk a little bit more later on about the parks. And we're spending an enormous amount of money on parks. I think people would like to see more spent on roads. Thank you.
Additional comments or questions from the audience? Questions from the council?
I guess I'm going to be like Councilman Hammond this week, since he's not here.
That's great, thank you.
Mr. Rouschenbach, I called you two weeks ago on some miscellaneous streets and sidewalks. And you said we were going to need to look at appropriating some more money to work on those. Is this going to be part of?
This is different. I have a project sitting on my desk. This is strictly for asphalt street improvement. So we, in engineering, have turned the concrete work over to Public Works. They handle that, you know, working with their councilmen. And we have a separate contract that does all of the concrete work. Asphalt's a little different, it's longer swast, so we put together a bid package for that. As y'all know, we've been back before the council a couple of times this year to get more money for, you know, unplanned streets and drainage and things like that. So it's kind of eaten into some of our typical street program. So I'm looking for an additional $700,000 to get all of that asphalt program complete. And really would appreciate y'all's concurrence in that. I think what you're mentioning is I've been out with Councilman Maggio, looking specifically. We spent quite a bit of time, I've done that with several council members over the years, just addressing issues, specific issues in his district, and tried to put pen to paper to what those were, that he's getting calls from his constituents and just things that we're observing. And we were looking at somewhere between $500,000 and $600,000 just for his district. And I suspect many of the districts to have similar problems. So we do keep a, as y'all well know, a clearinghouse of where we are, what those areas are, and try to work with each council district annually to put together the best prioritized package that gets put out to bid and that work gets built.
Thank you for going with me, Ben. I mean, I'm going to tell you something about Ben. I've been in business all my life, but you get engineer like this right here, you get jobs done. I mean, I call him on Sunday. We've got water leaks. I'll go out see the water leak. Ben gets right there and those people come, and I'm going to tell you, first-class service.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ben, for what you do.
Any additional questions from the council? Please cast your vote. Already done public comment.
My name is Deborah Ross. I live at 1200 Full Love Drive in Bossier. And we had the streets done down there, and there is a drainage ditch on my home. And I had spoke with Rick that works for the city of Bossier. The drainage ditch is built up too high, so when it rains, the water does not drain in it. But whoever built it, they build it where all the concrete has broken around it and the drain will, the lid would tilt. And I spoke with Rick about it. Some kids could possibly fall in this drainage ditch. I think it needs to be concreted around because all it has up there now are corns, you know, the orange corns. And I think it's like a safety issue, safety issue for the community. So I don't know who else to talk to, but I did talk to Rick about, and he said that contractors would be back, but he don't know when they would be back. So I'm just bringing it to the city council. If something happened to any kid on Full Love and Foster, if they happen to fall into this drain, you know, the city's going to probably be out of some money. Thank you.
Excuse me, ma'am.
Wade, would you like to?
What's your address?
That's Mr. Rich right there, that's who you're talking to.
That's him.
See if he's got any questions or comments.
You know Rick, right? Do you know Rick that worked for the city of Bossier?
You're talking about Rick Garza?
Yes. I spoke with him a couple of times about it, and he said that it was going to be a minute before the contractors can come back and fix that.
It's concrete work there to?
Yeah, you know, the drainage should have the round drain that put the water to run it. The concrete is broken up around it.
I'll come down there and take a look at it. I didn't know anything about it, but there was concrete, a drain open.
It's not open, it's broken up. The concrete is broken, and it has been up. And I went out there and put it back down, and Rick came out and brought the corns to put around it so people won't mess with it. But that's proven, you know, the children's still going to mess with it.
I'll come down there and take a look at it.
No, that's fine, I was just bringing it to the councilman.
I was just going to, we've done some work over there, some drainage work, Wade, and I'll be happy to go out there and meet with you.
Yeah, it's right down the corner of Full Love.
Okay, Foster and Full Love. Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to amend ordinance 8 of 2019, appropriating an additional $250,000 from the 2017 Sales Tax Bond towards the Tinsley Park baseball renovations for the completion of the Tinsley Park dugout replacement project, awarding the base bid to Delta Specialty Contractors LLC in the amount of $885,700, and approving the report of deductive change order number one in the amount of $115,700. First reading.
So move.
Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Maggio. Comments from the audience?
There's Jack.
Well, I'm just going to try to sit in for Mr. Hammond, maybe. The question is, what's the change order for? It's a huge change order. I think this drives that project up over a million dollars. And I think that that's a huge project. And I think in the future that we ought to really think about, rather than spending money so much on recreation, that we ought to be spending more on infrastructure. Thank you.
Can I say something? You know, we had a, we was in a meeting, we had one night about recreation.
Mm-hmm.
It was pretty packed. You know, they wanted, I mean, they wanted more recreation, more pickleball courts, more ball fields, you know, more this and that. And like we explained to them, you know, we're doing, we're trying to do everything we can, but you can't have everything, you know. More tennis courts, more this. I mean, like I said, we're spending a lot of money, but now you get criticized for spending money, so.
And I'm not tracking the statement made just a moment ago. So that's why I got up, I just wanted to make some clarification. It's a deductive change order, we're not adding to the project, it's a deductive. So we were here, we opened bids a couple weeks ago, I think more than a couple weeks ago now. That project came in above the available funds that were allocated in that budget. And to be clear, that was a budget that was put together from a bond issue quite a ways back. And there was trailing dollars left in there. That bond was allocated towards recreation projects. So we worked with Bossier Parks to, you know, come up with what we believe to be the best allocation of that money. You've got the brand-new part of Tinsley Field, and a lot of the old field was rehabilitated, but the dugouts are still the old dugouts. And so they really wanted desperately to freshen up the dugouts, to replace those, so that they can be more competitive in this baseball space, which is very popular around here. So what's before you is a measure to get that project under construction. We've worked with the engineering group to come up with some value engineering alternatives to kind of reduce that original scope of work. And so we're asking to move that project forward, to award the contract, along with simultaneously deducting their contract price and get moving. We have a small window, gentlemen, to get this thing done with weather and tournaments and everything else. So just to clear some of the confusion there, that's what this is for. And without this measure, the project doesn't happen. So, thank you. Any other questions?
I would, are these dugouts absolutely necessary? Or is it just kind of a wish list? I mean, it's a serious question, I'm not trying to.
It's a question that's probably not as easy to answer for me. I would say, and I say this delicately, but to be competitive in the space that we're in and to be as good, if not better, than the other parks that are doing the same thing, Coach Blahan would probably concur that they are needed.
Thank you, Ben, yes. What we have, we've got an old facility out there. Small, 12 and under could fit in the dugouts. Now we've got older people playing, older people playing in tournaments, they're not big enough. They're outdated. They've been there for God knows how long. And what you need is a dugout where everybody gets in the dugout and not sitting up in the edge of the stands with mom and dad. You know, and mom and dad can't run over and coach. They need to be separated. And to do that, we've got to come in and redo these dugouts to accommodate what we're offering to get people to continue to come into our town. And like I say, we've got World Series coming in. We need some room. We need to be able to accommodate the players in the dugout, not sitting in the bleachers. Because the bigger the people, the more space they take.
So, and I know that I'm by myself in this for two and a half years, I have been, but that's fine. You said the key phrase there, when people come in, people who live in Bossier City and pay tax dollars don't have access to this facility. It's people who don't pay tax dollars.
Yes, they do, sir.
No, they don't. They can play in tournaments, but they don't have an option to use this facility. And over five years, we've spent $21,447,361 at Tinsley Complex. And to me, that is an awful lot of money. And the taxpayer doesn't get to use the facility. And does nobody see an issue with this?
I got an issue for what you just said. It's not accurate.
I'm all ears.
The facility we're trying to redo, the dugout, is the old part of Tinsley. That's where the adult softball players play. That's where the high school comes and plays, you know. And this is a facility that's used more than just tournaments. We do have high schools. We've had colleges come in and play there.
We, we are recruiting people to play at the updated, brand-new facility, correct?
Yes, sir, T2.
These dugouts that we're proposing are the older facility?
Yes, sir.
We're not necessarily recruiting people to come play there. We're trying to get them to come to the new, nice one, that the public does not have access to.
They do play at the older facility. We do have tournaments out there on the weekends. I'm not sure how often you come through the complex on Saturday, but we're filled up.
I'll give you credit, it's packed on weekends.
Yes, sir. And if you go out on Monday, excuse me for interrupting, go ahead, sir.
No, I'm just, if I have, if I coach a team and I want to practice out there, I can't. I'm not allowed. It's not an option. I can in Ruston, I can in Broussard, I can in Youngsville, but I can't in Bossier. I can't even go to the other two premier parks in the city, Clifford Almond and Walbrook. And my thing is, I think we ought to be investing more in parks and recs. I think we ought to be investing in, because when kids have things to do, it keeps them out of trouble. So I'm 100% behind the mission. But I can't be behind the mission if the taxpayer does not get use of its facility. At this point, we're subsidizing, and we should just sell it to a private company and let them run it.
Are you coaching a team local, playing in a local league? If you were?
There are hundreds of local teams that practice across the river, quite frankly, but they live in Bossier City. And I don't want to beat this dead horse because we beat it.
But they go out of town to play. They don't, they don't play here. But we've got, if you're in a league here, Little League or Dixie League or whatever, there's fields to practice on.
Right, you have to play in a league to have access to Walbrook and Clifford Almond.
Because they're managed by other?
And the people who get to use our nice, beautiful, $21,447,361 facility do not live in the city of Bossier. They do not pay taxes. And that is a problem. And everybody up here should have a problem with spending $21,447,361 of taxpayer money on a facility that taxpayers cannot use. This is, this is a huge deal. When we talk about can't afford raises in a budget, but we can afford this. I mean, when is it going to stop? When is accountability going to be had on wasting taxpayer dollars?
Mr. Smith, I believe you recognize the sales tax has gone up. That's due to people coming in our town, spending money. The hotel motel tax has gone up. That's people staying in our town while we're having these tournaments. And we do use the facility during the week. We have middle schools play out there, where you're talking about. We do have other schools that play at the facility. We do have tournaments being played out there by the high schools. I mean.
If I wanted to, if I wanted to rent the field, can I rent the field?
For what?
If I wanted, if I wanted to rent the field to practice baseball, can I rent the field?
We don't practice. We play games.
Thank you. Okay, if I wanted to play a game, if I, if Ben, if I wanted to have a city council baseball game, can I pay for it and go out there and play?
If you've got a game, yes.
I can rent one field and play a game?
If you want to play a game, yes.
When did that, when did Bossier City's policy change?
It hasn't.
No, it most certainly has. We can move forward.
I just wanted to add something really quickly because I gathered most of the data probably that Mr. Smith is alluding to. And it was 1,934,000, which regardless, 19, 21, is still a lot. Part of that was also for Tinsley Soccer. Tinsley Soccer and Tinsley Football, we spent about $130,000 re-crowning those fields just a couple of years ago. We just replaced two concession restroom facilities, one at soccer and one at football. We replaced the fencing at football. I mean, I've got a whole list of the work that we've done at each of those parks. So it's not just. each of those parks, so it's not just Tinsley Baseball. We are making an effort to be competitive in the travel baseball industry, and it is a multi-billion dollar industry. And we've generated quite a bit of funds this year from tournaments. Over 120,000 just on money that we've collected from tournament directors this calendar year. So that's no small sum of money, plus the economic impact that each of those tournaments bring on a weekly basis. So the dugouts is a big part of this. Something that Mr. Rochenbach didn't mention that's also a part of this, that I assume is part of your packet, is to replace the backstop fencing on Field One with a netting system on Field One, which is similar to what we have at the new complex. That fencing, when we had our hurricane come through here six or seven years ago, almost blew the entire backstop fencing to the ground, and we hired a contractor to come up and stand it up as best we could. But I'm telling you, each of those posts have weakened points on those posts, and the next storm we have, it's coming to the ground, and it's gonna have to be replaced. So we're trying to plan ahead, not sit on our hands. We're, we're looking at ways, of course, to save money within our department, but we're also now looking at ways to make money through our department. And I think we do that by hosting tournaments, which we've done. And Mr. Carswell, who's our sports recreation supervisor, and he's done a great job bringing tournaments from out of town into our city and into our restaurants and into our shopping centers. So maybe independently, they're not paying taxes, but collectively, they are when they go shopping, they are when they stay in the hotels, and they are when they go to the restaurants. So having said that, we do need these dugouts. They're too small for all age groups. Kids used to come with a coach, and the coach had all the bats in a bat bag. They passed out a couple of helmets, and they went out and played. That's not the case anymore. And if you've been around travel baseball, you know that. Everybody has their own bag. Everybody needs to have their own seat as well.
Thank you, guys.
Well, before you, before you leave, since it was mentioned by the speaker before, Hooters Park, what's your, what's your thoughts on that? Is that accurate information?
I'm actually unaware of that. We have painted that facility. The outside, we've completely done. Since I've been here, and I know I've been here almost 10 years, so the outside's been completely painted. The inside of the gym has been completely painted. We rented, we refinished the gym floor every December, so sometime between December 1st and December 3rd, the gym floor will be redone again. We've relamped the gym. We've put in two playgrounds at that facility. We maintain a walking trail that we only own half of. We leased the other half. Kate owns half of it, but we mow all of that. So I'm gonna have to go out and look for some cracked sidewalk. I replace sidewalk a lot. I just replaced three sections at North Bojor. And Ms. Williamson will attest, we spend a lot of money on concrete repairs within our department. So I will go out and look at those things.
Okay.
Can I just take one second? I'm too distracted. I, I love what you guys do. David?
Yep.
David Crockett, 653 Du Main Drive, Bojor City, Louisiana.
That second's up, Mr. Chris.
Oh, go ahead.
It's that second's up.
I know, thank you. But I love what you guys do. I mean, I, I love Tinsley Field. I love all these things. But your payoff for 21 or whatever million dollars it is will take you 30 years, 40 years. It will take you longer. When is your break-even point? That's what the city has to look at. When you're, when you have infrastructure issues, now let me just address Hooters Park, because it's one of my favorite places. It's where kids go for Head Start and other programs. I saw a picnic the, the other day that must have had 50 to 70 people at it. It was just a fabulous, fabulous area that people use. The water flood, when you get a heavy rain, it takes five days for the water to drain out of the baseball fields. The, the, yes, you painted the outside, but there's major repair that needs to be done to that structure that's on the outside. But the outside doesn't look as bad as the inside. The insulation is falling off the ceilings. I've been out there about six or seven times over the last year. It does need a lot of work. Insulation is literally, I mean, you make faces, but it's falling off the ceilings. I've sent pictures, I sent y'all all about 50 slideshow pictures about a year and a half ago, when I, when we shot down the idea of a tennis court, when we look at Hooters Park. When you go out there, the people that are at the CADA play baseball out there, but they can't play when it's raining and it's flooded. Yes, they upgraded the playground equipment, but it doesn't have rubberized playground surfaces, and you've got holes out there where the kids play in it. That's where we need to get kids off the street. That's where Bojor City walked the neighborhoods. That's one of the things I love about the term limits petition, is I've gotten to know the people of Bojor City. We need to get out there and get to know the people, and I thank you. And, and Coach, you guys do a great job maintaining parks. I know that. But, but there are so many holes where the people need it the most, and boy, Councilman, great job capturing the issue that, that, because I've heard that all over the city, people need practice fields. So any way you look at it, the average person in Bojor City doesn't get to use it, it's a problem.
Thank you, guys.
The public comment was before the speaker. Go ahead and finish, but when I call for public comments, that's when you would come up here and comment.
Have you not, were there not public comments?
Yes, yes, ma'am. Nobody came.
Well, it's kind of in reference to the comments that were made. My name is Alice Boyer, 5041 Highway 80, Haunted. And I think that a lot of these decisions, you know, the decision in front of this was made like an investment decision, right, with a return on capital that's been outlaid, and that it's gonna be returned by people coming and spending their money here and that kind of thing. But if the taxpayer dollars are being used for this purpose, and the taxpayers don't get to use the facilities that they are paying for, that the city is gonna generate money for at some point in the future, it is kind of, you know, it's a little bit of the discouraging thing that if we don't have access to it, if we're paying for it, and that's all. I mean, not that it's not a good business decision to do so, but I think that the public probably should have access to this stuff. Otherwise, who is the beneficiary of the actual facility? Thank you.
Any additional questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Sit up, counsel. Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to approve report of change order number one for the Tinsley Ballpark parking lot expansion phase one and two with an increase in project cost of $99,631.52 and an adding an additional 21 days. First reading.
So move. Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Montgomery. Questions from the audience? Comments? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to amend the 2023 general fund budget to increase information services department overtime expenditures $10,000. First reading.
So move. Second.
First by Councilman Smith, second by Councilman Williams. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution supporting the city's application to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for funding under entitlement status, under authority of Title I of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974, 42 U.S.C. 3535D and 42 U.S.C. 5301 at Squire. First and final reading.
So move. Second.
First by Councilman Smith, second by Councilman Maggio. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Reports. Angela Williamson, Finance Director, monthly financial report.
Good afternoon, counsel. Mayor Chandler. Yeah, before you, the financials for the month ended September 30th, 2023. Page one is revenue by funds. City's currently 26% over budget. The decrease in hotel motel taxes fund revenues because the sales tax dedication check from the state was received in September in the prior year. The increase in sales tax capital fund revenue is due to an increase in the sales tax revenue and distributions to capital in the current year. The majority of the increase in EMS fund revenue is due to an increase in EMS billings of $268,000 compared to September 2022. Page two is expenses by fund. The city is currently 5% under budget. The decrease in civic center expenditures is due to the bathroom remodel in 2022. The majority of the increase in water fund expenses is due to an increase in chemicals for the water treatment plant. Page three is the sales tax imperative report. Sales tax revenue is up 7.4% compared to September 2022. Page four is the Manning report. There are 10 more full-time employees than last month, and full-time employees are 43 under budget. There was no change in part-time employees from last month, and part-time employees are five under budget. Page five is the water and sewer utility report. Net operating income after debt service for September 2023 has decreased 2% compared to September 2022. Current year-to-date income has decreased 7% from prior year, and it's 1% over budget. On a rolling 12-month basis, net operating income is up 12%. Can I answer? Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our announcements?
Yeah, Mr. President, I got, I got some remarks to make, and it's, it's Chris, some of the things you said at the last meeting that I don't think is true, or I think is untrue, okay? So this is what Mr. Smith said. I think it's a bad look when we have streets and sidewalks that we can't repair. We don't have the money and the budget to do that. We're starting in 2021 to 2023, put $8 million in there, and that was $1.6 million per district. That's a lot of money. And every year, and I've been doing this a long time, we go up to the engineer's office, we sit down with them. I usually have a list of year-to-year the streets I need done, sidewalks I need done, just from riding around looking. And, you know, last year Clinton was the assistant engineer. We rode my district, talked about asphalt streets. Some of them needed it. We did those. Some of them had cracks from, you know, several years, which we'll get on the following years. That's been done every year, you know, so they, they do know what's going on. He can zoom in on a, on a street panel that I wanted done, you know, where you can see the big old dip in it, and we got that done. The next thing was, what Mr. Smith said was, we've got police and fire who are on the, who are bottom paid, who are the bottom paid in their respective fields. Money's not in the budget to give them a raise, but there's money for a $300,000 statute. You know, I, I just did a little research. It wasn't much, but, you know, 2018, we gave them $2,400 January, $2,400 in April, a bump in pay. 2023 was a $2,000 bump in pay. Alexandria contracted with a Vermillion Analytics and did base pays and things like that. And it's just something I found on the internet, you know, and it had 13 small cities, the size of Bojor, and we was number six as far as pay, police officers pay. So I don't think you can say that we're not doing streets, we don't have the money, because we're putting a lot of money into them. And also Public Works or Wade, he has a million dollars in his budget also for doing concrete work, sidewalks work that needs to be done. So I just thought some of these things were, they weren't true, you know, so I, it's not a shot at, at Chris, it's just something that if we're gonna do something, that just tell the whole truth. And it's not, it's just statements of mine. Just nobody on this council had anything to do with it, except myself. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I appreciate those comments, Mr. Williams, and I will send you over a list of every police department in our region, where it will show Bojor City dead last at the bottom. That's not, that's not me making anything up, and I'll do the same for the fire. I, I'm not trying to stir up controversy, quite opposite. I'm just trying to do what I think is right for the city. And when I talk to our leadership in the civil service departments, they'll tell you, we train them for other depart, we train them for other departments. They come here, they get their training, then they leave. And if I'm wrong, I'll admit I'm wrong, but I don't think I am. In fact, I'm 99.99% sure I am. And Mr. Darby has done a lot of legwork on getting, doing some research for a staff study. When we get the results of that, I think we'll really see how far down the list Bojor City is. And it's, it's, we didn't get here overnight, and we're not gonna fix it overnight. It's baby steps. And as far as infrastructure, Mr. Rochenbach just sat up here and said that he could probably spend $500,000 to $600,000 per district.
It takes a long time, though, to get things done. Like I said, I've been working on these streets and, for a while.
A statute would have cost one district. The dugouts would cost two districts. We've already done three of five districts with things we've passed just in the last two weeks. And so I, I admire you. I admire our relationship and the things that you have taught me, because you've been very helpful to me.
I appreciate it.
And we've told each other a million times, we can disagree up here, but when we walk out, we're still gonna be friends.
Exactly.
And that's all this is. But I, I do believe that as a council, with about a year and a half left in this term, we have a lot of work to do, that we can leave a pretty impactful legacy on Bojor City. And it sounds like you're open to it, so I hope that we can work together and get some good stuff up here for us to vote on in the coming months. Thank you.
Do you have any announcements, Mayor?
Yes, I, Mr. President, I want, there's some Bojor youth leadership out here. I'm gonna get them recognized. If y'all would stand up, please, and be recognized on the... Well, we appreciate y'all coming and... Thank y'all very much. And also, I'd like to appreciate the council for, we're working on the budget, and I appreciate all working together on this. And I, I know we're gonna come out, and certain things are gonna come out good. I appreciate you guys.
Mr. President.
All right.
Yes, sir. Yeah. Mr. Mayor, I would request that the management of parks and recreation bring back their discovery of Hooters Park, once they do their assessment. And I think we have the next council on the 31st, but you can send me that information before then. That, that would be suffice.
Okay. All right. Any additional announcements from the council? All right, meeting adjourned.